Let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, July the 26th, 2022. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask if you would to stand with council as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance and then I will offer an invocation for council.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Most kind and gracious heavenly father, we come before you humbly this evening and thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed on our lives in this beautiful day. We thank you that you bring us together as a community and for the calling that you have placed on our lives as elected officials. We thank you for the civic participation that we will observe tonight and for your hands guiding this city and its leadership. We ask that in all that we do through the course of this meeting, we'll be reminded of your guidance and direction in our lives and in our purpose and in our jobs. All these things we ask in Christ's name before we say amen.
Amen.
In public forum, we set aside time for those that are citizens of the city to address the city in regards to issues that are on the council. We have typically invited others with interest in the agenda item to speak as well too. To do that, we will ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I have got a yellow sheet of paper up here that I will hold up two minutes into your comments and then a red sheet that I will hold up to indicate that your three minutes are up. Items should be directed in regards to the item that is on the agenda and we have, I think, fifteen people that have asked to speak tonight, so we will entertain those comments. Please be mindful of the comments that others have made in terms of your comments and with that, we will start our public forum. Our first speaker this evening is Joe Horn. Mr. Horn, as you come to the podium, if you would, when you get here, if you will state your name and address as a matter of record and for others that would like to speak this evening, I will ask that you do the same thing so we will have a record of your comments. Floor is...hold on one second, let me get my...floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Horn. I live at the corner of Brockman, McClemmon, and Fay Court and I just wanted to express my concern for the safety. I'm opposed to the rezoning because we already have traffic problems in the neighborhood. And just to be brief, I'll read you an example of that safety problem. On January 9th, 2019, a large red dump truck full of rocks, the dump trucks that come in and out of the rock quarry, tumbled over right in front of our neighborhood and that is right where the kids wait for the school bus. So there's a safety concern there. We have a lot of kids in the neighborhood and so I just wanted to express the fact that if we go ahead and rezone and start building more industrial warehouses, this is just going to add to the traffic problem. And so that's pretty much all I have, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Lance Walmack. I live at 208 Twin Valley Road, Dustin Duncan. Last time I was up here, I spoke about the safety of Abner Creek Road, so I won't go into that again. But what I wanted to do tonight is, I live on Twin Valley Road and we have industry that's moved in all around us. It was once farming community. And the similarities between Twin Valley and Abner Creek being industrial commercial right next to residential. We wake up now between 5:00 and 5:30 in the morning, apparently that's when a lot of truckers hit the road and going down our road, it wakes us up. We were told that there would be no trucks, but my camera picks up 21 to 25 a day going down the road. My grandchildren have to go to bed now two to three hours early to make up for having to get up at 5:30. The warehouse closest to us is covered with floodlights all around to light up the parking lot. And so last week, my wife had to go and buy some dark curtains for our bedroom so that the light won't be coming in through the night. Unlike the north end of Brockman, I mean, Abner Creek, Twin Valley has shoulders and the shoulders are called front lawns. The shoulders are so beat up that we must pull up, pull over when meeting a semi. We can't drive down the shoulder because there's so many potholes and broken asphalt, so we've learned to just pull into someone's yard and wait for the truck to pass. My son, who lives next door, has had to relocate his trash can and his mailbox and is presently in a battle with USPS because they insist he continue to replace the gravel in front of his mailbox that's been eaten up by the trucks. And I've been told that industrial, commercial, and residential will work together. The trouble is, they just don't work well. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Grover Tims. I live at 1028 Abner Creek Road, a pastor Fulton Presbyterian Church, which is located at 821 Abner Creek Road. I am one of those same faces that have appeared before council in previous weeks as various properties in our community have become, have come before council to be annexed, zoned, or rezoned. And I've come because I have lived in the community for over thirty years, pastor in the historic congregation of Fulton, P C A. And I've come too because I care about my community. I have worked with a developer when he was seeking to purchase property adjacent to our church facility and I have opposed the same developer when he was seeking rezoning of another piece of property. In all of these previous issues, the discussion focused on the number of houses, the type of housing, and the failure to require developers to provide meaningful, and that's the key word, recreational and green spaces for the new residents. To me, the issue this evening is fundamentally different. The proposal is to take property that is currently zoned residential and rezonate to industrial. And as was said at the last council meeting by one of the council members, over the last two years, regardless of the planning map, this area has by default become a residential area. Not one, but numerous residential developments have been approved north of Abner Creek Road, which is the apparent arbitrary dividing line between industrial development and residential development. For example, going east on Abner Creek, there's Freeman Farm Development off of Old Jones Road, there's the Manor at Abner Creek Development, there's Mayfield Crossing across from Abner Creek Academy, and finally, there's Brook Hill Estates. Recently, council approved a residential development of over a hundred acres off of Mayfield Road. This property borders the Manor at Abner Creek property. Now going the opposite direction, west on Abner Creek, there's the new Overton Park Development and then there is the Fulton Acre Community on David Street and behind Fulton Pres, there's the proposed development of 136 townhouses. Ironic when we oppose the number and type of housing units for such a small piece of property behind our church, in a public meeting, one of the council members said that we should be glad the property was in the city and not in the county or we would be getting warehouses. Now, a few short weeks later, we're discussing property which is in the city and yet the proposal is warehouses. Going farther on Abner Creek, there's Redwood Apartments and beyond Redwood Apartments, additional apartments are presently under construction. All of this development north, on the north side of Abner Creek from Westmoreland to Mayfield Road is residential in nature. It's not a matter of two wrongs don't make a right. Previous decisions in this area call for this piece of property to be preserved as residential. Instead of making Abner Creek the arbitrary dividing line between industrial and residential, let the current natural barrier of trees serve as the dividing line. And then finally...
Mr. Tims, we'll wrap it up for you, please, sir.
I will wrap it up. Finally, I just want to point out what industrial one will permit. It's a long list, manufacturing of chemicals, manufacturing of cleaning products, manufacturing of plastic products, mini warehouses, salvage yards, and sexually oriented businesses. At a previous council meeting, I attended, the council opposed the rezoning request by a church that wanted to build a parking lot. The reasoning was that a change in zoning while allowing for a church parking lot also allowed any future owner of the property to build something that would disrupt the integrity of the community. To me, the same reasoning applies here. The current purchase of the property plans to build warehouses, however...
Mr. Tims, we're over four minutes. Can you wrap it up?
I will wrap it up, sir. However, it will be, however, how do we know what the future actually holds and what will be built there? Thank you very much.
So here's what we're gonna, here's what we're gonna do. According to our rules, we set aside thirty minutes for comment. We can either stick to that or we can give everybody a chance to speak tonight. So the longer we clap and the longer we talk, the less people that are going to get to speak or we're going to go to two minutes apiece. So let's, let's, let's have some decorum as we move forward here and let's keep in mind, everybody would like to speak tonight, okay? So let's keep it moving along. With that, Mr. Fogelman, you're next.
My name's Chip Fogelman. I'm with Arbor Land Design and our office is at 49 Greenland Drive in Greenville. The engineer's been working on the project for rezone 33-2022. And only extra things I have are based on our last meeting. We had given staff a landscape plan, just show a conceptual plan of what we had planned to do. And I had passed out to council our preliminary master plan of the area, just showing you what we planned to do with these office warehouses. So unless you have any questions about what you see, but I'll be available for further questions, but that's the only new information I have.
Yeah, Mark Cofrin. I'm the developer, Cofrin Properties, will be developing the project and I'm at 96, my office is 96 Brookfield Oaks Way, excuse me, Drive in Greenville. The only thing I would add to what Chip says, maybe just add a little color to the drawing that you have above you, as you can see, Abner Creek's at the bottom of the property. We have a fair amount of landscaping in front of the car parking lot that would front Abner Creek and that landscaping continues up to the proposed curb cut on Brockman McClemmon. The truck roads, other than that curb cut there and the existing one, which is closer to the frontage road and 85 out there, there's only two curb cuts and so all the traffic, cars and trucks is internal to the project. And as we had mentioned before, we are not asking for and nor do we think we would ever get a curb cut on Abner Creek Road and we do not expect trucks to use Abner Creek Road for all the reasons that have been enumerated in the last two meetings. And I will be available for questions if you have any now or later.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Massey. I live in Saddle Brook at 659 Cross Buck Trail. You've heard quite a bit from me, I know, but I'd like to have a moment to respond to some of the things that have been said by the council. Several of you have listened and currently support the community's call to reject this ordinance as it is written. So I guess this is going to be to those of you who approve it because this is not what our community sees moving forward. What this, of course, doesn't show, just as I spoke previously at the planning commission, these are not dirt lots anymore. I believe this is at least fifteen homes whose backyards are going to share this property. This is at least right here, from here down is fifty townhomes surrounded with eighty single-family homes behind it. And right here, 172 new homes have been approved by this council in less than the last two and a half, three years. And I hear many of you say that this has been the plan all along, but if this is the plan, it's been poorly executed. We cannot feasibly ask people to accept that residential and industrial touch. There are not enough provisions within this zoning to provide any guarantee that this will not affect the community that already exists here negatively. The community this council has brought here, a community that many of which are going to work in these industrial warehouses. As you all respond to the people who are going to be speaking here tonight, please don't make the mistake of appearing out of touch to the community. When you make references to neighborhoods such as, I believe it was Briar Ridge that was brought up at the last meeting, that approval to accept their roads into the city and under the city's control was met with it being across from the Mitsubishi plant. But if you actually go and you look at that map, you will see not only is that the only neighborhood that actually faces it, there is one road entering onto it and the sides of the homes are all that faces it, excuse me, two homes. The rest of that plant is surrounded by large berms, established trees, and the plant is set far off the road. If your obligation is to the people, we're the people and we're not going to be quiet even if this is something you want to move forward, it cannot move forward as it stands with any kind of, you don't, this isn't going to protect all those homes, those little trees and pretty flowers. If you look at any other industrial complex, you will not see that type of landscaping. So if y'all can, I spoke to a member of the city planners, but you can ask them to withdraw this and submit it in another way. Please consider that.
Good evening, Corey Massey. I live at 659 Cross Buck in Saddle Farm Community, along with my wife Rachel and our daughter Leah. I'm just here to speak to y'all again and join my voice with the rest in opposition to the rezoning of this area. We live just immediately south of the proposed rezoning, just, just south across Abner Creek there in Saddle Brook. We haven't had the privilege of living here in Greer for twenty or thirty years like some of these fine folks have. We are recent transplants from Greenville. We moved away from White Horse Road area where our own neighborhood was in the middle of service zoning. We were grandfathered in from the 1960s or whatever, surrounded by industrial, surrounded by commercials, surrounded by service, and we wanted to get away from that. We knew that coming here, we would be near other industrial zones, near other commercial zones, but not directly across the street from them. And, you know, there's only so much research you can do about the future prospects or future plans of an area, future land use maps, et cetera, et cetera. The proposed rezoning here from residential industrial is no longer consistent with or compatible with the surrounding immediate vicinity. Actions by this council in recent years have approved new developments, new expansions, new rezonings that have made this area more residential than ever before and we'd like to keep it that way as long as we can. Industrial is already there due north of us and there's got to be a dividing line somewhere. We understand that. Abner Creek makes, I'm sure, a fine arbitrary dividing line in the minds of those who have done the planning, but there's no access to Abner Creek proposed from this development, so they don't need to be on Abner Creek. They can be further up north if they want to be. I propose that we keep the dividing line between industrial and residential where it sits currently, which is in the natural forested area just north of these zones here. And hopefully, the residential lots that exist currently, hopefully the owners there can find a different developer to sell to or different homeowners to sell to and put this to a higher, better use than what is being proposed currently. I think it would be an error of the council to continue or to approve the rezoning. There was reference made in the last city council meeting that two wrongs don't make a right. We don't have anybody here that lives in Overton Development because it's not built just yet, it's still going up vertical just to the west there, but I'll bet if you ask them nine months or a year from now, they're not going to say that moving into those homes was a mistake for them. It wasn't a mistake for us, but it would be a mistake to continue with the industrial rezoning. Thank you.
I thought my name was not very familiar. Thank you very much. Don't want to rehash many things sincerely and there were add-ons from the last time. The only incident happened during that snowfall not too long ago. There were two vehicles totally blocked Abner Creek. And because it doesn't take much of a space for two vehicles to block it enough. And so I'm probably repeating or rehashing, truly, it has, even if those roads are supposed to be like any other roads, I was told, but the housings and what comes with it has already exceeded, far exceeded, the amount of the, the amount of the space in the driving. So just imagine, now we have a major extension of this and this is just not too far from the Brockman McMillan's road. In fact, it's right on it. So without any, I don't know how else I can emphasize that it truly, without any question in my mind at least, that it adds to some danger, et cetera. We don't have a trauma place very close, although we have Palom Hospital, it's not a trauma site. And so, and it is, we just are asking for trouble. When it comes out, I'm sure the council member will definitely change if necessary, but that will be too late. So I hope, I hope you do consider, okay? Thank you very much.
I'm Lisa Tims. I live at 1028 Abner Creek Road and I appreciate you all hearing us tonight. The city of Greer has made it clear in the past that they make their decisions based on their maps and they have diverted from these maps occasionally. And I would like to respectfully submit that this is an occasion where you need to go against your maps for the following reasons. Approving the rezoning request goes against reason, it goes against common courtesy, it goes against both personal integrity and the integrity of the council members as a whole, and it goes against our personal safety, the safety of those living and passing through this intersection and, and our roads. With regard to reason, it is hard for, it is hard for me to understand why this request is even seriously being considered at a second reading here at City Hall. Proper zoning is meant to protect the residents, it is meant to protect people's property values, it is to promote and protect public health, safety, and general welfare. The rezoning request goes against all these purposes. With regard to common courtesy, the people are of our area, and I'd like to see a show of hands if possible, how many people are from our area with regard to this request? The people of our area are very concerned about their property values, there's hundreds of homeowners involved and collectively, there are millions of dollars at risk and we're very concerned about the terrible eyesore that this will be. You can't hide these three-story warehouses behind anything. And the city of Greer continues to happily take people's tax money without responding in a positive way to our needs and concerns. What do you call that? So many people have showed up here asking and asking for help and, and they're denied over and over again and people are getting angry and very upset. We call that taxation without representation and that's got a familiar ring. It's my understanding that the city of Greer is not lacking for tax money, look around at all the new development, so there's no desperate need for tax dollars and there's other locations in Greer where these warehouses could, would not impact the residents so directly. So what possible legitimate reason is there for pursuing the construction of these warehouses when by their construction, they present an even greater safety risk to those living here and passing through the area? With regard to safety, my husband and I were near the intersection of Abner Creek Road and Westmoreland and we met an eighteen-wheeler coming directly at us. We have a picture that I left back there, my husband has it, of the eighteen-wheeler coming right at us. And how many of the people in this room have met a truck on Abner Creek Road on the wrong side of the road? Yeah, it's a serious thing. So I started taking pictures. We got seventeen pictures in about two hours of eighteen-wheelers going down Abner Creek Road and Brockman McClemmon Road. And that's not counting other trucks, there are a whole lot of other trucks. So I would much rather, with regard to this being residential or being industrial, I would much rather meet a hundred cars on Abner Creek Road going through the curves than one large eighteen-wheeler or one large truck. With regard to the planning and zoning meeting that took place a while back, they only discussed, I thought this was pretty unusual, they only discussed how people would go out of this complex, not how they would come into it, and they only seemed to indicate that it would, that people would go left. Somehow, if there's products being, going out, the products have to come into. And there are, as we've said again and again, the traffic diverts to Abner Creek Road. So I've been going door to door, spoken to lots of people, reached out to lots of people. We don't want warehouses in any shape or form, no matter how high the berms, no matter where the entrances are placed...
We're at 3:30, please wrap it up.
If you, and you shouldn't want them either, they will stand as a permanent testimony at this very visible corner where thousands of people pass through to the lack of concern, lack of consideration, and lack of respect that the city, the members of Greer City Council will be demonstrating by approving this request. I was told by one of the members of the council today that they do have a deep concern and consideration for the citizens of Greer. Actions speak louder than words. If that is so, please demonstrate that by voting against this request and don't dismiss us again. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm William Ostel. I live at 583 Backacre Court in Saddleback Farms, just across from where the proposed development is. First of all, this is a great map. I mean, wow, doesn't that just show you how close you're putting industrial property to residents? We're not talking about even hundreds of feet, we're talking about tens of feet, less than a hundred feet away. You're not providing for any buffer zones whatsoever in this plan. How about a community center? How about a park? How about a church? Anything that would buffer between our homes here and here and over here and that monstrosity? This is a monstrosity you're putting in there. And I don't care about what people have said, I mean, they've said good things about the... You've got those trucks moving around with their backup sensors going beep, beep, beep! And the sound carries in that community. You know, I don't like this. This is, this is, I moved from California to get away from crowds. You can see that I'm agitated here. The developer says, you know, what he's going to do, but the moment you put this as industrial one, he can sell it to anybody else, and they can put anything they want in there. Don't do this to us. Please, we're your residents, your community, we're neighbors. And I'll tell you, there'll be a lot of opposition, the folks that vote yes for this.
We will end the meeting if we can't keep some sense of decorum moving forward. This is a legislative meeting, the purpose of which is to hear everybody. Daniel, you're next. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, but you're next up, if you'll pronounce your last name at the podium, please, sir.
My name is Daniel Harrison. I live at 1197 Abner Creek Road. I moved here in 2007. I moved out to Abner Creek because it was a rural community. I've watched it change to a suburban community. To be honest with you, I wasn't too happy about that. I'm going to be frank with you. I came here and opposed the old Brockman McLeimman farmhouse, which you guys wanted to go forward with turning into a school. Luckily, some of you guys, you know, put your suits on right that day. My wife and I are standing outside the other day, and we looked up, and we couldn't see the stars anymore because you guys built the damn BMW plant right behind our house. You literally cannot see stars. You literally took the stars from my family. You talk about traffic. Buses will not even stop on Abner Creek Road. They had to change an entire bus route because it's too dangerous. Yet I hear this guy come up and talk about, oh, truck trailers try to avoid Abner Creek Road. That is a crock. Anybody who lives there can tell you that, and you can do all the traffic studies you want. Last time I was up here, you guys did a traffic study. It was at like 10:00 AM in the morning in the summertime. Try 5:30 PM during school time. Not only that, let's mention culture and values. You guys stand up here, and we do the pledge of allegiance, and you guys have the audacity to pray, and then I watched the vote from last time? All you guys care about is tax revenue and corporate cronyism. Good, you're going to get promotions, you're going to get better political careers. Good for you. This house is all I got to pass on to my kids, and that's all many of us have here. Do you understand that? While you guys are sitting up here, good, I hope you guys have wonderful careers, but damn it, you are hurting us. And that's all I want to say.
Hi, my name is Catalina Bowen, and I live at 229 David Road. I also own the parcel in the back, which is in within Greer City limits, so I think that gives me a little bit an edgewise. Mayor, I see your face, and I don't want you to be upset, but I don't want us to be upset either. I don't want anybody to be upset, so I'll get back to my point. Anyway, we recently have made friends with a reliable source at the South Carolina DOT, and we have it on good authority, or on reliable authority, let me change my words there, that the state, they've been trying to work at giving the state roads back to the cities, and my question is, has this been proposed to us here in Greer? And if so, and if not, will we take that on so that we could start doing something about our own road conditions? My children and I read about the Romans this year, and before they started their infrastructure, they started with the roads because they knew what was coming, and that's definitely a problem that we have here. It's definitely very dangerous, and I really hope that if we are offered the possibility to take on the responsibility for the roads, that we would do such a thing in order to better fix all of the problems with the roads that we are encountering now. Also, I know not everybody here lives the same way, but I don't know how many of you or where you guys live, per se, and what is in your backyards, and if you would like or not like to see something like that in your very own backyards. And I know you guys are grateful that we're coming out in the community to hear you guys or to be heard and stuff, but I don't want you guys to just be grateful. We want you guys to really, really care for us, and we're happy if you would care about what we care about too. I guess we want you to come to our defense, and I agree with Mr. Massey, Abner Creek should not be the dividing line. And Mayor, I know you're a praying man, and I know the Bible says to do unto others as you would have them do unto you, so I ask you to please stand up for us and, like the Romans, would you please help us, poor plebeians? Thank you.
I'm guessing that's me.
Mr. Mary Smith, if anyone told us earlier.
Ben Griffin. It's me.
My name is Ben Griffin. I live at 610 Sherrill Court, and I just found out about this whole thing about a week and a half ago. And when I first heard about it, I said to myself, there's no way, there's no way that they're going to put in an industrial warehouse here. That would just be ridiculous. Like, who would even think that's reasonable? And then I read into it, and sure enough, there it is. I mean, I'm going to reiterate a lot of the points that were made here today. Traffic, if anybody tells you that these trucks are going to go out here and go down Brockman McLeimman, sit at that intersection any day, right here, any day, at 5:30, there's cars coming off because 85 got backed up. The other day, Abner Creek was backed up almost halfway to West Moreland with cars. Because when 85 backs up, this is where they all go. And if you think a truck is going to come out of here or come down 85 the other way and get stuck in traffic when they just come up Abner Creek, that's what they do. And every single person here, like they just said, has almost been hit by a dump truck. I almost got hit by a dump truck running a year ago. I had to literally dive out of the road because a dump truck driver was on his cell phone, he almost killed me. So traffic is, you know, traffic is another thing, but I would, I guess my point is, I would challenge you to go to any, any of the communities that surround us and find a single person, one. There's no way anybody in here knows anyone who thinks that this is okay, but, and we're relying on you to make the right decision here. For me, my biggest, one of my biggest concerns is resale value, right? Who is going to drive into one of these communities to buy one of our homes, drive by that and go, yeah, this is a great place for us to raise our children? Nobody. We're all going to lose money on our homes the day that this goes in, right? So, and to the last woman's point, I would, I would challenge any one of you in your neighborhood to put this behind your house, put this across the street from your house. If anybody is going to sit here and look me in the eye honestly and tell me that in your neighborhood, 100 yards from your home, you'd put a three-story industrial complex, I would say I highly doubt that. And to the pastor's point, what else is going to go in here? This could be a, this could literally be a porno store, it could be a plastic manufacturing. I mean, here's the list of all the things that could go in there. And you guys are going to sit here and tell me that, no, 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 that's okay. How many doors, sir, who's, you guys, how many doors are in this city? How many doors?
Mr. Griffin, please.
How many doors?
Mr. Griffin?
Of course, not the answer. There's probably 50 doors in there, 50 trucks in and out of there every single day.
Mr. Griffin, your time is up.
All right, all right, I'm just going to make one last thing. This area used to be fields, right? I used to run out there, and then all these homes came in, but it's residential, so you suck it up. But you guys are asking us to put an industrial complex. How this got this far is beyond me. This shouldn't have gotten past a permit, and you guys are going to allow this? I mean, how, how, more than half of you think this is okay is beyond me. That's all I have to say.
I didn't recognize you. Jim Guyer.
Thank you, and I would ask my friends that are here during my time of speaking, after my time of speaking, please hold your applause. If you see fit to applaud, please hold it, if you would please, out of respect for me and out of respect for the council. Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jim Guyer. I live at 103 Thurman Court in the Harwood Place subdivision. I'm here representing our subdivision as the vice president. Just want to address three things. We've heard over and over again, over the many months we've been talking about this, that two wrongs don't make a right. I'd like to throw something else out. Doing right is always the right thing. So I ask, as I stand here representing an overwhelming majority of your community, what is the right thing to do? Because doing the right thing is always the right thing to do. Secondly, we've heard a lot about the plan. Planning is good. I'm a planner, I'm an administrator. I don't mind plans, but plans should never supersede people. When our plans take priority over people, we've got a problem. Lastly, we've heard much about the need for a line to be drawn. I have a question for you, and it's a rhetorical question. Will a line that's drawn separate industrial from residential? Or will it separate commerce over a community? These are three questions I really would love you guys to think about before you take a second vote. What is the right thing to do for this city, for these people, for this community? Is a plan, any plan, more important than people? And thirdly, what kind of line do you desire to draw tonight? Thank you.
I believe that concludes our public hearing this evening. With that, we will move then to our meeting. You have the minutes from the council meeting July the 12th, 2022, in your packet. Council, I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any items of note to the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, you have departmental reports contained in your packet tonight. Administrator and/or department heads will be glad to assist you with anything that you might have. In regards to questions about those reports, I believe Ms. Howell is here to bring us our financial activities report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be giving a general, brief summary of the report for June 2022. Keep in mind, these are just operational results. This is our year-end. We still have invoices coming in, revenue coming in, and accruals that we'll be doing. So these numbers will change, but this is how it is right now. So starting out with the general fund, we have year-to-date revenue of $36,300,000. We have total expenditures of $34,332,000, which is 5% over budget. The cash account in the general fund is $17,474,000. If you look at the dashboards, we compared benchmarks, you look at the dashboards, we compared benchmarks to actuals, you see that we have a positive overall variance of $1,968,000. And then the cash balance in the general fund is $17,474,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $3166,000. Year-to-date expenditures are $2,582,000, and the cash balance is $2,203,000. Finally, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,172,000. Year-to-date expenditures are $732,000, and the cash balance in the account is $2230,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Council, floor is open for questions. Ms. Howell? Again, Mr. Seifer, or Ms. Howell, or the administrator, I'll be glad to help you with those if they arise after the meeting. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, the city's administrators report, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you very much. A few things I want to update you on. First, I want to just express my thanks to the Greer Chamber of Commerce, not only the Chamber of Commerce, but the sponsors that so graciously participated in the Public Safety Appreciation Luncheon last week. Mayor and I were in attendance there, and it was a great opportunity to say thank you, not only to the City of Greer's police and fire departments, but also our partners at Pelham Batesville and all the partners in, with Green Bull and Spartanburg EMS. It was a great event, and we really do appreciate the chamber hosting that. As far as some events and things that are going on here specifically this weekend, we have neighborhood litter cleanups set for the 30th. The events are sponsored from 8:00 AM until noon by the City of Greer, the Greer CPW, and Civil and Environmental Consultants. Supplies will be provided for the cleanups at these two locations. Hillcrest Baptist Church located at 111 Bible Brook, and this is going to support the cleanup of Bible Book Drive in Valentine Lane, and at BP Edwards Park located in Oak Street to support cleanup of Sunnyside Drive in Oak Street. I would encourage you to email neighbors@cityofgreer.org for more questions, but this will be from 8:00 AM till noon on the 30th. And finally, the last thing I want to mention tonight is that National Night Out is August the 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00. This is a national event where police engage with various communities all throughout the City of Greer. We are doing it at five different locations across the city. We are doing it at Needmore Rec Center, O'Neill Village, at BP Edwards Park, the residences at Century Park, and the Greer Cultural Arts Center. There will be food and activities, and there will be details on the city's website, so I would encourage you to reach out, not only on the city website, but through our other social media channels for more information. Mr. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Council, let's move to items of old business, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance 27-2022. This is an ordinance provided to the annexation of property owned by Crown Properties LLC located at 200 J Street by 100% petition and to establish a classification of R75 for the property. Mr. McManahan, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 27-22?
Yes, sir. Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 18th, and they did make a recommendation of approval for the R75 zoning request. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
As purpose, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 33-2022. An ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Peggy Henson, located at 945 Brockman McClyman Road, from RS to I-1. Mr. McManahan, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 33-2022?
No, sir. There is no new information.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank everyone that came out tonight and the ones that spoke. For the many emails that I received, I hope I responded to all of them. I may have missed one or two, but if I did, I apologize. So I certainly appreciate your coming, and I certainly understand your concerns here.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll say a few things if I could. I've gotten many of you in the last month, for sure. I have the privilege of directly representing. If you live in the City of Greer, in the Abner Creek area, I am your direct elected representative. I've served in this role, it's been a privilege for the last two and a half years. I mean that very genuinely. If you asked me 10 years if I'd be in public service, I would have had no idea how that would have happened 10 years later. But I thoroughly enjoy it. I love this community. I've loved hearing from you, getting to know you. I hope you'll let me do it a little while longer, as well. Whether it's this issue, whether it's the development that was approved not long ago behind the Presbyterian Church, one thing that I ran on that's still very important to me, I hope that's all, will continue to be important to me, and I believe is important to my colleagues, is that our residents feel heard. And I hope that if I've spoken to you, if I've been in a meeting at the church that you've come to, that if you've emailed me, that you feel heard and you feel respected. I'll say, if I do get to serve you for however much longer, undoubtedly at some point, I'll make a vote that you don't really care for. That might even make you a little bit irritated, right? First reading, I voted against this, these rezonings. I plan to do so again tonight. I'll say this very simply. You know, I understand the emotion that's charged in something like this. I genuinely do. I don't live in your direct community, although I think Greer is a place that, we all live in the same community. We do. The men and women sitting next to me up here, we all live in the Greer community. All of them, but the youngster to my right, have served in this role and lived in this community longer than I have. I stumbled into Greer in 2009, not purposefully. Some of you came here on purpose. I didn't come to Greer on purpose. But I stumbled into Greer, not knowing where I was coming. I figured out, this is a pretty neat place. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to have a family. It's a great place to have a business. But it's not perfect. It's growing. We have challenges. This is a challenge. This won't be the last challenge in the area that I speak to you all about. I hope we're always of the same mind of those future challenges. Perhaps, undoubtedly, we won't be. I'll say this, I am a constituent of other representatives at the county level, the state level, the federal level. I am a constituent of our mayor, quite frankly. And I'll say that what makes Greer different, what we very quickly, my family and I very quickly saw in 2009, as we started figuring out what kind of community we'd moved to, is that we do have leaders who care and who listen, and who genuinely care and love our community. And so, again, I'll simply say, I understand the emotion that's involved with this. This is your home, and I want to do, I feel like I have done everything I can to speak out and represent your concerns well in that. But I'll just say, whether it's here at the municipal level, or the state level, or even the federal level, the colleagues of mine who will vote different from me tonight, they're human beings, and they go home to their families. They live in our community, not far from you, even if they don't live in your community. And so I would just caution you in the future about impugning folks' motives, or, you know, saying their motives, or why they may be doing something one way or the other, or that kind of thing. Because while we may not agree on every issue, we genuinely love Greer, and we genuinely love you as our constituents. To the actual issue tonight, you know, I don't have a whole lot of new information to add, but I will just say again, what I've heard from you very clearly, Council, you've heard it as well, it's not a matter of volume of traffic, but it is a concern for the type of potential traffic. I don't think that the developer is trying to say something wrong when they, you know, state their belief as to, you know, not necessarily meaningfully adding to, you know, volume of truck traffic. But I did see pictures of trucks going up and down Abner Creek, so, you know, I think that's a legitimate concern, a legitimate thing to bring forward. The roads in general, right? Abner Creek, it's not caught up with, you know, where we're going, where we are. Hopefully, we will. I think we will, right? Hopefully, as we work with our state partners, we'll be able to make that happen sooner rather than later. And I know we'll keep doing our part to make that happen. I've heard over and over, from the vast majority of my constituents in the area, we know this corner is going to develop. We know something is going to happen. We know it's going to happen soon. Regardless of our opinion about growth, about development, whether we think it's good or bad, the reality is, it's a reality, and it's going to be a reality at this corner. And so what I've listened to from you, and what my heart is, you know, how I've made my decisions, we need to just do it in the right way, right? I said it in our last meeting, I'll say it again. I fully understand and support our future land use map. Fortunately or unfortunately, it just is a reality. You know, the proximity to BMW, to, you know, other key pieces of infrastructure mean that there is going to be industrial development in that area. At one point in time, we did see that line as Abner Creek. Some of us still do see that line as Abner Creek in some regard. You know, when we did, when we did see some of the residential development between West Morland and Brockman McClyman coming in, both sides of the road of Abner Creek, in my mind, you know, we need to shift that line north. Overton Park, you see the line, the northern boundary of Overton Park. It's my opinion that we would be best served, our residents would be best served by extending that line, imaginary line at this point, over to Brockman McClyman, and letting that continue developing with some sort of a buffer for the neighborhoods that are there, for the neighborhoods that are going in. Again, this isn't going to be the last time we talk about something going on south of 85. I wish I could tell you that it was. Maybe I don't, right? I think so. A lot of the great things that we see about Greer going on, it is because, for better and for worse. People want to live here. Many of you spoke, right? You came from other places. I came from somewhere else, right? That's not going to stop. That's not going to stop. And so you have my commitment to always try to make the very best decision. I believe the very best decision for us, in general, even though there's factors on both sides, is that we deny this rezoning request. That being said, we'll be here again, and I hope to have the opportunity to represent you well in those future discussions as well.
Well said. Others?
I'll also talk about the Abner Creek Road, how narrow it is. I rode that, I guess, my fourth time today, and it is very narrow. And I had, it had been pointed out to me several times about the 18-wheelers going down through there. And I did get pictures, I'm sure most of you've got the pictures that I did today, of the 18-wheelers coming down and blocking up traffic, and that people have had to veer off the road to avoid being hit, to create an accident. So, and also, on the picture that was up there, the plans for this, and they did mention, someone, when they were talking, when I rode through there and I see the condominiums being built right across the street, or townhomes, whichever they are, being built right across the street from here, and like someone said, I mean, I'm not sure that road is 20 feet, but the back of these homes are almost on the road themselves. They don't have very much space between the building and the road. But then to see this, I mean, it's just like, they're like, when you look at it, you're thinking they're like that. So to me, it certainly is a disadvantage for the people that would be dying into those units. And today, when I rode down through there, I did see a lot of grading going on. Are they starting to grade that area already, or has that just started or something? I know they were grading down towards Brockman McClyman. I know before I had noticed the grading happening back on Abner Creek, but I don't think that I recognized, or I don't recall seeing the grading that's going on down towards Brockman McClyman already at this time.
There's grading going on at the intersection of Brockman and Abner, kind of catty corner to this property. It's on the opposite side of the street.
Vines Creek.
Vines Creek, yes, sir.
Yeah, it was on Brockman McClyman before you get to Abner Creek.
Yes, ma'am.
Coming from 101.
On the left, Judy, if you're coming from 101.
Well, it was on the right. It's on the right. If I'm coming down Brockman McClyman, which I wasn't, I was going down Abner Creek. And if I'm going down Abner Creek, going past the Fulton Church, and going that way, when I get to Brockman McClyman, and this over there, not on the right side over here, but on the right, across the street, on Brockman McClyman, there's a house, and then there's some grading being done down towards Brockman McClyman.
You're talking about Vines Creek.
I'm sorry.
It's the Vines Creek subdivision that's being graded. Vines Creek. It's the subdivision, Vines Creek. Yes, ma'am.
On Brockman McClyman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Well, this is right before you get to Abner Creek. And I know that there's up this road and past this, there are other developments being built that will back right up to this also. To me, I mean, you know, I kind of try to look at things through my perspective as to how I would feel. And I certainly wouldn't like it, especially if I was at little townhouses, condominiums, whatever, looking right across the street, or the other developments there. It's too close to the road, and if you look at that, and the landscaping, I'm sure that it's a great company and all that, but, you know, zoned as the I-1, there's no way to guarantee, or there's no one there that's going to hold them to what they say they're going to do. No one, except their work, you know. And I'm sure they mean it in good spirit, but you know how things happen as you get along.
Others? Comments?
Can you have the developer come up quickly? I'm just ask a few questions about the ongoing project.
Sure. Mr. Coughlin, if you'd like to come to the podium, please, sir.
Can you pull up the map to look at the project? Can you show the, I mean, the actual map of the?
UNGIS.
Yeah, that would be great. The one just kind of shows the parcel that's existing that's right behind it, and it just kind of showed the boundaries of it. Mr. Coughlin, while he's doing that, I think last time you said that there's, the grading is ongoing right now. Is that directly behind Overton?
Uh, Global Commerce Park, three days, the development of that subdivision is the property we own right now. And the grading y'all were referring to is the Global Commerce Park. So, as maybe you recall in the last meeting, we were discussing where to draw the line. I mean, this piece of property, where the 20 acres that we're trying to buy, abuts Global Commerce Park. So this was going to be, those two buildings were an extension of a larger park. And so what you saw going on on Brockman McClyman, are you referring to that little white house? I don't know who was asking that question. The little white house on Brockman McClyman?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
The little white house on Brockman?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yeah, that, we own that house, and...
Now, is there a trailer? I'm driving, so I'm trying to look as I'm driving. So is there a trailer or a smaller house on Brockman McClyman, close to the house that's closest to Abner Creek?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, but that's not part of this. I think the one with the, the kind of trailer, like a living?
Yeah, well, I just know it was smaller. Again, like I said, I was driving.
Well, there's a piece of property that's in the county, which is this piece right there. It's in the satellite image instead of the green. And so the property we're buying is essentially this light green piece. And the property we already own are all those trees back that way. And that's where the grading you saw, I think, is what you're referring to.
Okay.
And so we are in the process of putting two similar buildings to what you saw in the drawing on that piece of property back there, and then clearing on Brockman McClyman for our third building.
So the V-shaped parcel is what you currently own, correct?
Right, so, yeah. So the blue, we own that. And we're grading. All that's either developed or being developed right now. Now, this blue piece here, where it says 750, it's owned industrial, we don't own that. And that's sort of the little triangular odd-shaped pieces on either side. That's Mr. Daley. This piece is, the satellite image is in the county, and I think that has a trailer on it. I didn't know if that's the one you were talking about. As well as a house, it has a house.
Those smaller places down there in the green, or lime green, whatever color you want to call that, are those supposed to be the houses that's the property that's being sold?
That's what's being sold, yeah. All of that, really, that light green piece is being sold.
Yeah, because, yeah, okay. And I could have been looking at it wrong, but it just appeared that the first house there that's closest to Abner Creek, and on the other side of it, was where the grading was going out.
Well, you can't see the grading from here, and you can't see the grading right there, because it's just a pasture.
So it was some red dirt. It was red dirt.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, I mean, the piece that we're buying is a pasture, the piece that we are clearing that tree's on. So that's under development right now.
And so what you're clearing for now, is that that's Phase 3A on the map that you gave us?
Right, I think, well, did you give them the whole, what'd you give them there, Chuck?
I gave them the master plan.
Yeah, so the two buildings, the two buildings that were up on the screen earlier are part of that master plan, and those will be the two closest to Abner Creek. And then after that, you see two more buildings that backed up to each other in a similar manner, and that's what we're doing right now.
Gotcha. So that, what, the parcel that you're requesting I-1 on, that's for Phase 4?
Right, that'll be the right. And so the other two buildings, those are the two buildings you see on that master plan that we turned, that was up here, the landscape lands. And then the other, next two buildings are the ones we're building right now, which is right behind, doing that, on that same service.
Okay, thank you. Others?
Mr. McManahan, when this...
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. When this parcel was brought into the city, and, you know, as you can see, obviously, it backs up to residential, I mean, what are typically our screening requirements, or how often do we run into this where I-1 is adjacent to residential zoning?
It does happen some. The screening requirements right now in the current zoning ordinance is basically a privacy fence or shrubs. But it's something we're looking at doing in the UDO, is expanding those.
And if this came in as a DRD, we could be more specific about what we're looking for and the types of buffers and different things that we would require, or that we would ask for as a city.
Correct. You would have the ability to say, if you wanted a larger buffer, you know, barms built in, stuff like that, you would have that ability.
It would be further setback from the road, too, correct?
Yes, ma'am. You can, within a DRD, you can dictate some of that stuff, yes, ma'am.
Well, based on the site plan that they've submitted, I mean, Phase 3 is already part of what their plan is based on their current footprint. I mean, what we're, what they're asking for is to go into Phase 4, which would allow them to build two more buildings on the site. So the site is expanding, regardless of how we vote tonight, based on what Mr. Coughlin shared with us.
Phase 4 would not be able to happen unless the property was rezoned I-1.
Right, okay.
Others?
Mr. Mayor.
Spot.
Thank you for everybody coming out tonight. Appreciate all that you had to say. And, you know, like Mr. Hopper said, we're all from Greer, and we love this area, and we take this very seriously. I've been out to the site, I mean, I've been to this site, you know, as a kid, and more recently, when this came up, I saw your emails. Thank you for all those, and the pictures, and the comments, and your thoughts, and everything that you shared tonight. You know, it is, it is difficult when we're trying to balance and to juggle industry, commercial, residential. I mean, as you can see, we've already got industrial that's going to back up to this entire Overton neighborhood. It's already preexisting. And now, obviously, we're having the conversation tonight about this budding up to Abner Creek Road. And it's challenging because we've talked about this, the proximity to 85, the proximity to an international airport, an inland port, BMW. There's so much industry in this area, and we've got to find a place to put the industry inside the city. And we, that's why we have these, our land use maps. That is a guide. And, but I love what Mr. Geyer said tonight about thinking about people before plans, and I appreciate, you know, that comment. That was a good summary of this. And, you know, and I heard you, and I've heard what everybody else said. And I do want to say that I do see that industry and the footprint of this expanding, but I would like to see it more from a DRD perspective, because it doesn't only have an impact with Overton, but it does have an impact with some of the other parcels that are going to be across the street and adjacent. And so, yeah, I don't know how the vote's going to shake out tonight on this, but, you know, my preference in the future, if for some strange reason this doesn't go through, is to, you know, talk more specifically about what this, what the future looks like for this, for this parcel. And to be more specific about what the buffers look like, and so we can, you know, be more clear as far as, because, yes, we are, because of the infrastructure, we're in an area where industry is present. And we've got to find a way to get industry and residential to be in harmony, because that's going to be the case right here. Like Mark said, this is going to continue to come up south of 85, and we're going to continue to have these debates and discussions. And thank you all for coming out and participating in this process tonight.
Comments?
Could we, can we hold it over for maybe, could it be brought to DRD? I mean, can we request that, or do we have to go back to the drawing table, or what?
We've got a motion and a second. We're in discussion. It is, Ms. Albert, I would just reiterate for my own self, it's, you know, while DRD would help in ways, I'll just reiterate my opinion, you know, on three sides, the problem here, on three sides, we're surrounded by residential here. What has developed over the last 18, 24, two and a half years is residential. And even this and DRD improvements to the screening, buffers, et cetera, the fundamental issue in my mind still remains. And so, again, I would prefer that this be, you know, we wait for some more transitional use.
Mr. McManahan, what is the, you know, typically, what is the transition between industrial to blank parcel to residential normally in these scenarios?
Typically, you would see kind of like a service or some light commercial or kind of an apartment complex, higher density uses to kind of buffer between industrial to residential. So you kind of have that transition going from real intense use and slowly transition into just a pure residential use.
What is allowed in a service district?
They're similar to I-1. You don't have as much of the manufacturing aspect, but you allow for auto-type uses such as repair shops, you know, salvage yards, stuff like that. So it is less intense as I-1 because you don't allow the same amount of manufacturing, but it's not as intense.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question this time. So that we're clear, question's been called on the second and final reading of 33-2022. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
No.
Mr. Hopper.
No.
Mr. Dumas.
No.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
No.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Motion fails. Second and final reading of ordinance number 34-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Michael and Nancy Smith, located at 792 Brockman McClyman Road from RS Suburban to I-1. Mr. McManahan, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
No.
Mr. Hopper.
No.
Mr. Dumas.
No.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
No.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 35-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Jeffrey and Amy Harvey, located at 788 Brockman McClyman Road from RS to I-1. Mr. McManahan, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
No.
Mr. Hopper.
No.
Mr. Dumas.
No.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
No.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Counsel, second and final reading of ordinance number 37-2022. An ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ralph and Peggy Henson, located at 780 Brockman McClyman Road from RS to I-1. Mr. McManahan, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
No.
Mr. Hopper.
No.
Mr. Dumas.
No.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
No.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Counsel, second and final reading of ordinance number 37-2022. An ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ralph and Peggy Henson, located at 780 Brockman McClyman Road from RS to I-1. Do I hear a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion?
So moved.
So.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
No.
Mr. Hopper.
No.
Mr. Dumas.
No.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
No.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Counsel, second and final reading of ordinance number 37-2022. An ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ralph and Peggy Henson, located at 780 Brockman McClyman Road from RS to I-1. Do I hear a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion?
So moved.
So.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
I just have one comment. I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight for this vote, and just know that we care about the community. We spend a lot of time, you know, debating these things, trying to figure out, you know, what's the best for these areas. But thank you again.
Others? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
No.
Mr. Hopper.
No.
Mr. Dumas.
No.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
No.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Counsel, second and final reading of ordinance number 42-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by the City of Greer, located on Gap Creek Road, by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of R-20 for said property. Mr. McManahan, any new or additional information in regards to this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on July 18th and did make a recommendation of approval of the R-20 zoning. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the bid summary for the Benson Automotive Kids Planet in Century Park parking lot improvements. Mr. John Guggenheim joins us for that. Mr. Guggenheim, if you will stand by for just a minute, we'll take a brief recess because I think we're going to have some folks that are going to prefer to leave at this point.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
I don't know where that is. It was Brockman Park. You're the one that said it's SEDF team trying to get rid of all this. Someone's speaking out. Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. Don't hurt the constituents. Mr. Guggenheim, I believe the floor's yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much for that.
Yes, sir.
Opportunity. Good evening, counsel. Tonight, we've got the Benson Automotive Kids Planet parking lot improvement. This is a project that actually was designed, finished, designed last year in July. The improvement is to resurface, or not resurface, but to seal coat the entire upper parking lot that sits above Kids Planet, fix all cracks that are a quarter inch or bigger. But the main portion of this construction is to redo the entrance, which is pretty substantial. The entrance would, has already been approved by DOT. All that was done a pretty long time ago. But the, I did get in touch with the, with the group we're recommending that we give this to, which is Palmetto Group out of Gaffney. They were the sole bidder on this project. They informed me that we wouldn't need to shut down Kids Planet, that we could keep that open and utilize the lower parking lots. They wouldn't have an issue with that. We may have to affect the upper nine of the Desk Golf, Frisbee Golf, it wouldn't affect the bottom nine. There are two additional alternates that were also included in this bid. One is to do bollards and a little sidewalk stretch right there at the snow hut. Alternate number two is to fix an erosion problem that's actually occurring underneath the asphalt now, in that one corner up from the snow hut, that's partially probably caused by runoff coming down from the apartment complex and the way the slope is currently on that lot. That's the information I've got here. Their bid as being the sole bidder was for $187,792.80 for both, including both alternates. Be happy to answer any questions.
For the purpose of discussion and questions, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Mr. Guggenheim, I appreciate the position that a lot of construction companies in, but this is at least the second meeting now that every bid that we have looked at has had a sole bidder. Is that in our best interest, or we feel like we're getting competitive pricing? Is, are some of these projects worth taking a second look at? I mean, it's, seems, you know, on a $190,000 project that we might have had somebody else bid, is it simply the work that we're doing is so unusual or so small that we just can't get people to bid on it?
Well, the problem there, and what I'm learning from everybody, is just the amount of work out there that everybody's chasing. I agree. I agree in this instance. We had two folks show up at the pre-bid, and then the second didn't even bother to produce the quote, the bid. And we're running into that a good bit as well. People show up to a pre-bid, we run them through what our scope of work is, and then they don't even bother producing a bid. Why that is, I can't quite answer that, other than the amount of work that's out there right now. This is, I was very surprised at this being the amount of work. I would have thought we'd have gotten more of a response on this. Some of the smaller projects, I understand more readily, I understand why they wouldn't go after smaller stuff. But this was a pretty substantial project, so I was very surprised. To answer your question, Mayor, I'm in agreement with you. Sometimes I wonder, too, are we better off to put something like this out again? I don't know that we'll get any more responses. I don't know. I can't answer that. It's been my experience here lately that we're running into just people not showing up, or if they do, they're not giving us a bid. So I can't.
Mr. Mayor, are you aware of any, either municipalities or counties, that through their procurement policy, in a situation where there is a sole bidder or no bidders, that there is an allowance of some sort that is made for the city just to procure either a local company or somebody that we have worked with in the past just to do the work? I mean, is that feasible or not?
I think it's certainly feasible. And, Mr. Mayor, to be perfectly frank, council establishes the procurement policy by their actions, okay? So in this particular case, yes, I think that we can do one of two things. We can, we can award it as presented by staff and move forward with the sole source, or treat it to some degree like a professional service, like we would with architects, engineers, something along those lines. My recommendation from a staff perspective is that we would not do that because it's, in a situation like this, there's material that can be measured, there's labor that can be measured. My recommendation is to continue on in this particular format by procuring in, with a hard, quote-unquote, hard bid. So, Mr. Mayor, while it's not ideal, I would recommend either approving it tonight or giving it another shot and putting it back out to bid. Either way, I don't know that it would be any worse for the wear.
And let me be clear, I do not know who the Palmetto Group is. I have got nothing against the Palmetto Group from Gaffney. That's, that's mine with me. And I, you know, I don't know if we had other bids, if they'd have been a low bidder or, you know, a high bidder. Just seems a bit troubling in terms of a pattern that we've, that we've run into here that to make up a point in time that we may want to look at something, something other than what we're doing and pass some of this work along to the local contractors that they're willing to establish a relationship of some kind with us, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I will say also that, and pardon me for interrupting, the staff is working on some amendments to the procurement ordinance. I think this is certainly something that can be debated at that time, and we will definitely take any...
a local company or somebody that we have worked with in the past just to do the work? I mean, is that feasible or not?
I think it's certainly feasible. And, Mr. Mayor, to be perfectly frank, council establishes the procurement policy by their actions, okay? So in this particular case, yes, I think that we can do one of two things. We can, we can award it as presented by staff and move forward with the sole source, or treat it to some degree like a professional service, like we would with architects, engineers, something along those lines. My recommendation from a staff perspective is that we would not do that because it's, in a situation like this, there's material that can be measured, there's labor that can be measured. My recommendation is to continue on in this particular format by procuring in, with a hard, quote-unquote, hard bid. So, Mr. Mayor, while it's not ideal, I would recommend either approving it tonight or giving it another shot and putting it back out to bid. Either way, I don't know that would be any worse for the wear.
And let me be clear, I do not know who the Palmetto Group is. I have got nothing against the Palmetto Group from Gaffney. That's, that's fine with me. And I, you know, I don't know if we had other bids, if they'd have been a low bidder or, you know, a high bidder. Just seems a bit troubling in terms of a pattern that we've, that we've run into here, that there may come a point in time that we may want to look at something, something other than what we're doing and pass some of this work along to the local contractors if they're willing to, to establish a relationship of some kind with us, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I will say also that, and pardon me for interrupting, the staff is working on some amendments to the procurement ordinance. I think this is certainly something that can be debated at that time, and we will definitely take any kind of advice and direction from council to include in that.
Thank you, sir. Others?
One question I did have. Was there any kind of engineer's estimate? Were y'all able to at least, you know, kind of check to make sure this was in line with what it should be for this one?
Well, I mean, Blue River, Blue Water did do their design and they did go out there, Councilman. And Steve Grant, our city engineer, took a look at it and said he was in line with everything, all their recommendations, how they were going to handle it. I'm not sure, quite sure what else. We didn't have a third party go out or anything.
No, I was just saying, just to quantify a number of, you know, they did the design. Did we take it a step further and say, well, what do you think this would cost us to do?
Yeah. Yeah. No, they didn't provide us any estimates or anything. But I will say, I kind of thought this was lower than I expected based on just some of the other projects that we've done and what asphalt and these coatings are costing right now. And I'm sure you're aware, like, it just has gone through the roof. So based on just the scale and the size of this lot, I thought that was a pretty good estimate. But there again, I was, I was really disappointed that we only had one to go by on that project.
Others? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the second item of new business, first reading of ordinance number 45-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Up Country Cottage Incorporated located on Memorial Drive from RM1 to R2. Mr. McManahan?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. As you stated, this is to rezone the parcels on Memorial Drive from RM1 to RM2. This is a current site that has duplexes built into it. Here is an aerial view of the property. Here is the current zoning. The pink you see to the north is commercial, that is C3. It's surrounded by RM1 and R12. And future land use map calls this as suburban commercial. What the developer is wanting to do, I'll keep it on this picture, is the existing drive access right here, they will utilize and continue to build some duplexes around here. When this property was built, the RM1 zoning wasn't in place, so the density that he had put in back then does not match the current RM1. It's more reflective of RM2. So that's the reason for the request to rezone to RM2 to continue that development. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on the 18th and did make a recommendation of approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you. So noted, and if we have questions, we'll be glad to, to ask you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Comes with a recommendation from Planning Commission. Others in regards to questions or comments?
I'm sorry, quickly, changing from RM1 to 2 again, what is the advantage or the reasoning? The lot requirements for RM1 for a duplex is 12,000 square feet and RM2 is 10,000 square feet. Okay, so it's just... It's to kind of mirror what he's done in there in the past. Gotcha. Okay.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. I apologize you had to stay with us this evening. Thank you for doing so. We appreciate it. Item 3, last item before us this evening, is the first reading of ordinance number 46-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Julius Munoz located at 226 East Church Street from RM1 to R5. Mr. McManahan?
Yes, sir. As you stated, this is to rezone to R5. The applicant is wanting to subdivide the property right here on this aerial view. The existing home will stay, will be also zoned to R5, but is to create a new lot for a single-family residence. Here is the current land use map. The majority of the property in here is either zoned to RM1, RM2, or C2. And within the future land use map, it is traditional neighborhood. And kind of here's the street view as I stated. So it's at the corner of East Church and Sunnyside. So basically, he's proposing to draw a property line kind of in this area and build a structure on the remaining lot. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing, did make a recommendation of approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, it comes with the approval of the Planning Commission. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
A motion and a second.
Second.
By show of hands, the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record will indicate no one said so. Floor's open for discussion.
Just south of that red area, there's a little strip of land that's not been having markings or anything. Is that, is that a city alleyway or what is it?
This area right here?
Yeah, that little strip right there.
Yes, sir. That's alleyway to nowhere. Yes, sir. It dead ends at the end of his property. Does the city own the alley? I can do some research on that. It's either ours or the county's. It's kind of, we'd have to research it and see. But we do require a survey when they come for a rezoning request, correct? Yes, sir. So the survey is attached to the ordinance and he has surveyed it out. And I believe on the exhibit, he does have the property line showing the split. Gotcha.
Others?
Have they gave you any kind of inclination of how that's, the house is going to sit on that site? Because on the survey, I don't see any setbacks or anything. I'm just, have they voiced that? Because that's a tight...
Yeah, he hasn't given us a site plan for it yet. The setbacks would be 20 off of East Church. It'll have to be 20 off of Sunnyside and then five off the side, the left side, and then five off the rear property line.
Okay. It's going to be a fairly tight fit on that.
Questions? Comments?
Just looking at the, I don't know if this is the site map, or at least got pulled up here. This is a survey.
It's a survey.
Survey, but it, it looks like the, the building and the deck, I mean, literally go right up to the, to the line. There, is there no, with our, with our 5 zoning, is there no... So the, the existing structure is grandfathered in. It does not meet the requirements from zoning. That house was condemned a couple of years ago and brought out of condemnation. So the footprint of that house stayed the same. They didn't, they added the deck to it, but that was it. So the house is, that's existing, is probably 12 to 15 feet from the front property line, probably less than 10 feet from the rear property line. But the new home will have to comply with the zoning requirements of the 20 off of Church, 20 off of Sunnyside, and the five off the side and rear.
How much on the rear?
The rear for R5 is 5 feet.
You probably should encourage these people to come ask us for that alleyway.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
No. Counsel, we have no items before us in executive session. With that, we stand adjourned.